You're posted for six o'clock. We are missing one regular member and one associate member, but I am still going to start the meeting anyway. So, am I good? Okay. So I'm going to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting Thursday, July 28th. It is 6:15 PM and the first item is I'd like to ask if anyone is recording other than Lake Camp. Okay. We have a continued hearing that we have first on our agenda. It's the Dixon hearing for 36 Main Street. We do have an email that was submitted by Ms. Dixon to the clerk on July 21st. Thank you for the information regarding the next zoning board of appeals meeting. Unfortunately, we are still awaiting a visit by the surveyor. May I please request another continuance for the hearing for 36 Main Street? So that was submitted to us via email. She's looking for a continuance to our August meeting, which I believe is August 18th according to the note you put here for me, Kathy. Is that correct? Do we have a motion to continue the hearing for pet recess and Julia Dixon?
I make a motion to continue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda, Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass. General Laws Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, July 28th, 2022, in the Lakeville Library, 4 Precinct Street. Upon the petition of Kevin and Suzanne Hirth, a special permit under 6.1.3 and 7.4 is requested to add to add to the second floor and modify the roof of a pre-existing non-conforming structure located on a pre-existing non-conforming law as provided by the Lakeville Bylaws. Property is 8 Edgewater Drive. The applicant and assorted documents can be viewed in the planning department at the town hall. So what I would like to do is, I'm assuming the Hirths are here representing themselves, correct?
Yes.
So why don't you tell us what you're looking to do and then I have some information I want to read into the record and we'll go from there.
It's an existing structure, no change in foundation size or anything like that. We have a second floor locked, which is window blocked and just real fine pretty much. So looking to take the existing gate frame and turn it into a shed frame on the roof. It will give you about five feet from the pate. So the pate is down, we'll five feet to the front wall with a shed door and give you light in the front and approximately shot.
Okay. Is it finished up there right now?
Yeah.
Is it?
It's just a bit.
Gotcha. You need more headspace unless you only have people who are... There you go. So this guy definitely couldn't walk in your second floor. Okay, let me read a few memos correspondence from some other boards. We have a memo from the Conservation Commission dated July 28th. Conservation Commission has reviewed the plan for an addition with roof at the reference location. The proposed construction is within 100 feet of the buffer zone and will require a filing or a request for determination of applicability. Also have a memo from the Board of Health dated July 20th. We received a copy of the petition for hearing of 8 Edgewater Drive. Sketch shown is from an as-built plan dated 7/16/2012, which is not up to date. The septic tank was relocated in March 2021 and the as-built plan has never been submitted showing the new location of the septic tank. Since the property is not in compliance, the Board of Health recommends that the applicant submit an as-built plan to the Board of Health to bring it into compliance before issuing an approval. I'm going to make a comment on that in a second. And we also have a memo from the planning board at their Thursday, July 14th. Excuse me, this was dated July 25th. At their Thursday, July 14th, 2022 meeting, the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition for hearing from the Board of Appeals. The board has no comments regarding this petition. Okay. Only because this email came in this afternoon, I'm going to read it. In regard to the Board of Health memo, I just want to clarify that the building... I had a conversation with the building commissioner to get a better understanding of that memo this afternoon, and I'm going to read what he sent to provide a quick clarification on the Board of Health recommendation to require the submission of a septic as-built prior to approval. The subject as-built was related to a tank relocation, and while it still remains due, the petition in front of the board does not propose any increase to existing building footprint, therefore will not be impacted by the tank's location. After the building commissioner consulted with the Board of Health agent, who is copied on the email, a special permit condition for the Board of Health approval prior to the issuance of a building permit will provide adequate assurance of an as-built submission while not delaying the project. So basically, in a nutshell, as long as if we were to approve this, as long as an as-built is submitted to the Board of Health, that's acceptable to them.
As I can ask you here today, I guess Ed is on vacation, so we can't all master the laws. That point of view was originally approved from the as-partner. It's exactly the way the plan was laid out and there was no deviation from it.
Okay. So in a nutshell, basically, if we were to look forward and approve it, it would be a condition that you need to get the Board of Health what they need. So we'd like to stay in our lane. Seems pretty straightforward and reasonable. You're not impacting negatively impacting the property anymore.
She has a property line with one neighbor and I got an email from Jess next door. We're in good terms and she, we have trees and it's by the property anyway, but she's got no issues at all.
Well, the notification was posted, so if she did, she would have the opportunity to come and tell us why she wasn't in favor of it, but I'll get to the audience in a second. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments from the board members? Anyone? Anyone in the audience want to comment for, against, or for any other reason in regards to this project? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
I couldn't touch it. Can we use the podium while we're by?
I'm sorry. You know what? Come on up to the podium. That'll make it easier so we can hear what you have to say.
Did you notice also mention about the super majority?
Yep.
Yes, I had some concerns about this proposal. Obviously, I mean, they've done a nice job on the property over the years. I mean, they've had it on the whole time, but I've seen the property when I was a kid, and the building we're talking about used to be a garage. When I was a kid, they opened the garage doors and they had, at that point, put furniture in there, made a living space out of it. Then eventually converted to a regular, truly a house. On that site plan, it shows as a one-bedroom apartment. And that main house used to be a nice little cute little red door cabin because the siding had changed. And that site plan shows, it showed they had a 16 by 16 addition to the kitchen. All those things are made of nice and then they got another variance for the carport and stuff like that. And the only thing they had in the past was, you know, was fact that they had way over 25% in previous area. And I know this particular project doesn't change that. What's done is done. That's already the past. My bigger concern is, I'm assuming that the septic system, which is obviously not all that old, was built to accommodate the one-bedroom apartment and the two-bedroom residential dwelling. If they're adding another floor to their main house, that regular house, that wouldn't bother me. They were relaying things out to keep the two bedrooms in there and relayed out rooms. That wouldn't bother me. But on this plan here, they're effectively, they're not just, they're stitching the roofline. They're raising the house several feet on the street side. They're raising it up, obviously on the other side. They're adding, I don't need exact dimensions, but I'd say 350 or 400 square feet of living space up there. That's much bigger than the lot bedroom in my mother's house that I grew up in. And so to me, this is actually, this addition to me is actually adding another bedroom to that house. They're keeping the bedroom on the first floor, and this lot is to me a giant lot to make it, each calling it headspace, which is true. But they get headspace, they're raising, you are piping at one end, because the higher at the other end, and it is a gigantic space. And to me, I don't know how they use it now, but to me, it's a guest house, a color one-bedroom apartment on the site plan. But to me, I can only ask as a person, either they or some future owner, they have that space there. How are they going to use it? What is this space for? And I see that just like the house I grew up in. It's a big lot. It's a bedroom. It may not have a closet in it, may not have a legally sized window to be a bedroom, but it's going to be used as a bedroom. And to me, that septic system is not designed for a fourth bedroom. And if they have that extra space, that's just me inviting more people to be there, and for what purpose? More likely to stay overnight than not. So I am concerned about that impact. I'm also concerned by the fact that, you know, the next door neighbor, you mentioned Jess, well, she's a living lady, but she lives down south. Her sister lives there now, so she couldn't be here in person. She had to, she wouldn't do it by writing or by, if you had her on video, she could do it by video conference. And she's not having any problem with it. But I'm concerned, even I've done about my, when I've done my special bit, people talk about keeping in character the neighborhood. In this case, they do have a house next door and a much bigger lot. That's have two stories. In that sense, it's no worse than that. On the other hand, this would be the first house that'd be two stories, literally. Look at that site plan. It's right on the property line. I assume it's 40 feet from the street, but it's, you know, it's two feet or one foot from the property line, not 20 feet. So to me, that's not keeping character of the neighborhood. It's also, I don't think the whole thing, you have that kind of a property. If you look at that site plan, it's so much of that land used compared to anywhere else in that neighborhood. It's not in keeping. And to me, to make it, I think it uses a word more inviting, but to make it functionally, it's going to accommodate more people, tells me they want it to have more people there. More people there, more stress on that septic system. And even if they don't have a official heating system in there now, same thing, house I grew up in there, we didn't live there year-round when I was a kid. We lived there three seasons though, you know, on weekends and summers. And with a fireplace, that's enough. You put a wood, insert, use a pedestal, you get enough. You want a house that small, you put a heat heater, you have heat. You have a year-round house there. So to me, that's going to become a two-family house on a very tiny lot and becoming a lot bigger. And I don't think it's appropriate to do that. I mean, I like the fact that it might add some value. I don't like the way it's going to look there, but that's my opinion, and I would defer in a sense to the next door neighbors. It's like I did with the carport. I had no problem with it. The next door neighbors had no problem with it. So when that's happened, I don't worry about it. But the idea of having more people crowded in that one little area with its limited parking, two houses, one little lot, I just don't think it's right. I don't think it's keeping. I think if somebody had come to Lakeville, you know, the last 10, 15 years and said, I want to do this and this and that to that property, yeah, it would never get anywhere near to what they got now. They've gone piecemeal, they followed the rules, they did get to where they are. But I think there has to be an end. If you prove this thing, what's to say? Okay, I'll make the second floor bigger, make the same size of the house. Let me add a third floor now. I just don't call it a bedroom. To me, it is a bedroom. So from that standpoint, I think it is detrimental because it's going to put stress on the septic system, and it's so close to the lake, it's not a good place to be doing that. And that's it.
Thank you. The only comment I will make as far as the, whether you call it a bedroom or the increase of flow to the septic is, that's not really our purview as to label what rooms can be used for in a house. And as far as the flow of the septic, that's really under the Board of Health's purview. So if you have a question or concern about that aspect of it, you probably should address it with that board. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments? Anyone on the board?
Could I ask a question? Are you adjacent to the property?
I'm two houses... There's two houses between me and that.
He's on top of the hill.
Okay.
For all the water that my septic's been moving for to accommodate comes from. So I appreciate his concerns, but I think he's definitely looking at the house to be with either one of them.
He's not really getting any of the runoff from my property. It's coming down by the neighbor across the street. Secondly, I'm trying to put a glide enable, which I was going to be setting a lot of these maintenance systems, I think, to run off from the glide roofs and the guy to make sure that I can know why I come from my guy to this property.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before I ask if we have anyone who would like to make a motion, I do want to point out to the petitioner, I know you've been before this board before, if memory serves me correct, you need a super majority. So it's a five-member board. We only have four of us here this evening. So you need to run the table, so to speak. You need all four in favor, or you could ask for a continuance if for any reason you wanted to wait till we had a complete.
The only thing, so all I can say is you're one of the most...
Okay. Well, unless you're...
My position regarding the building.
Unless you're opposed to it, I will see if anyone is like to make a motion, or if not, we don't have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit with the condition that the applicants provide the as-built drawings for the septic system to the Board of Health. And that's the condition I'll put on the special permit.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? No, you don't get to the... We're already in the middle of vote. Actually, I shouldn't say we're in the middle of a vote if this is comments only for the board at this point. Any further discussion amongst the board members? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're up.
So the board has two weeks to complete, excuse me, to complete the paperwork. It's then submitted to the town clerk where it stays for 20 days. If there's no appeal, then it can be sent out. You receive that and then you take that to the registry of deeds to have it recorded.
Yes, sir.
I was going to suggest the board, it must have been changed ahead of time, make an as-built plan for the septic system. I would suggest that the board require them also to conclude an as-built plan for the existing structure. That's not a big idea. So we need all these to be done, the same kind of this contract.
So you see if you can make...
Yeah.
...for the record. Okay. So that disposes of that one. You're all set. And we have minutes. Yes, we have some minutes from the June 16th meeting to approve, and then we get to wait around for our dual meeting. So...
Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion on the June 16th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I second you.
Sorry, you got to speak up, Chris. You're nodding. I can't take a nod. So, you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved.
Hello.
Mr. Shidi, how are you?
Good.
He's going to sit over here, only because we're having a dual meeting, so we need to save spaces for our planning board. Sorry, you get to go between those two guys. You don't get to sit next to them. Yeah. Only I get that place. Okay. Thank you. Do we have any old business to come before the zoning board? Do we have any new business anyone has? Mark, anything for us?
Not really.
Not right now?
Yeah.
Not tonight?
Not tonight. No.
Okay. So, yeah, we'll table that application requirement thing till...
Yes. Yeah, I haven't had time to...
That's fine. Don't worry about it.
Well, the planning board has a long list of zoning particles.
Gotcha.
Your joint meeting's taking some time and a few other projects, so...
Not a problem. So what I'm going to do at this point, I'm going to, I think I can... Can I?
We can adjourn until eight o'clock. I mean, seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. So do I need a motion to... I don't know. We've never had to stop a meeting. I've never had to stop a meeting before. Can I just recess it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can recess. I don't know. Judges usually recess.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to recess, so... Board of Appeals is coming out of there in recess. We are continuing the TAC Vega Mass. Owner LLC hearing from last month for a variance to increase the lot coverage to 73%. What I'm going to do, where we're holding this meeting at the same time with the planning board, is I'm going to defer to the planning board chair once they open their meeting to run the meeting, and questions and whatnot will go through.
Thank you, John. So at this time, I'd like to call the Lakeville Planning Board. Meeting to order this Thursday, July 28th at 7:00 PM. We have a forum of Peter Conroy, Michelle McEckren, Nora Klein, and myself, Mark Knox, the chair. The first item on our agenda is TAC Vega, owner of 310 Kenneth Welch Drive. And again, it's a joint meeting between the Lakeville Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So at this time, anybody speaking on behalf of 310 Kenneth Welch, please step to the podium and...
Hey, good evening. My name's Terrence Russell. I'm an architect with Upstein in Chicago. The address is 600 West Fulton Street. And we're the architects for the project. With me tonight, I have Natalie Brown from Brown in Sardina. She's our landscape architect. And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So we've all reviewed the plan. My biggest concern, I guess, we've received in our packets a water summary that was put together, and it calls out the two occupants of the building, Northeast Alternatives and Jushi. Both anticipate approximately 150 employees at their peak time of shift.
About 125 employees each.
Which we look at that as, that's going to be about 250 vehicles.
Correct.
I believe you're only providing around 208 or 10 spaces?
With handicap accessible parking, it's 212. And that's literally all that we can get on the site and try and be somewhat sensitive to the site coverage.
Understood. But it seems like that won't rectify the off-site parking that we see. I've had a couple of complaints from other people. A gentleman on Conservation Commission had reached out to me. He counted 35 cars parked across the street. And I know you're not, you haven't currently built this parking area, so you're limited, but it still raises concern that what you're proposing, is there a plan for the additional, say, 20 to 25, 30 cars on day one that will be housed by what you proposed?
There is discussion on remote parking and being able to shuttle employees, but nothing is definitive at this point, is all I can tell you. I know that their schedules and the staff and the shift sizes vary based on activities in the facility. And you're right, there are times where probably the planting, harvesting, and production could produce a lack of parking, depending on the staff counts.
Yeah. Typically, that's not a great situation. We'd love to see it somewhat addressed. And I know, I don't know how else, you know?
It's a tough site, to be honest with you. I think we've done the best we can to maximize it, still allow some landscape area in the front to kind of hide some of the mechanicals that we're obligated to put in for the building. But really, you know, given the long narrowness of what's left remaining, you can't put efficient parking there. You literally end up paving front yards. You end up with aisles where you can only park parallel to them. So you do solve some of the problems, but they're very difficult.
Yeah. I didn't see a comment letter from the Board of Health. We had talked with the town planner, and somebody else had mentioned the amount of proposed employees with this expansion or the final outfitting of the building. Has that been presented to them, to the Board of Health, to see if the current septic system would handle that increase in employees and flow?
I can only talk to the Jushi side because Jushi is my other client, which got us kind of started in this. Right now, they have their staff, so they're fine. Their waste goes to a tank that's actually pumped. They're not really using the, from what we can tell from our investigations, they're not using the septic field that's under the front drive. I know Northeast Alternatives does have a septic system on the northeast northwest corner, but I don't know what has happened with that planning.
All right. Well, we will need something from the Board of Health. I mean, we'll try and pursue that on our end.
Sure.
But, you know, I guess you should be prepared to offer up what information you have for your end of the building. And I guess we'll try and seek something from Northeast Alternatives. I'm told that the expanded proposed parking, we haven't quite yet sent it out to peer review?
That's correct. We got it a couple of days ago, so we have to send it to environmental partners to review the drainage report. That's correct.
So in short, it feels like there are still a few moving parts that need to be resolved between, you know, stuff like we get the stormwater report peer reviewed, the water allocation from the Board of Selectmen. It looks like there's still some pending questions about that. Mark, do you have something on that?
No. Essentially, the select board has requested certain information on water usage because if you calculate the maximum capacity of all the usage, it approaches the town's total allocation from Taunton. Now, although Taunton has lots of water, we still haven't adjusted the agreement, so that would need to be done. So that is something that we just found out about in that the two towns agreed to work together to try and figure out exactly what the total usage is and what's been allocated and then work toward adjusting an agreement. But it still means we need to find out what the current usage is, what's the projected future usage, so that it can be calculated within any sort of new agreement. So that's something that was requested last week, I believe, so...
So one other question that I have, not to open the floodgates even further, but could you find more space on this property to find parking? You're here in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, looking for 3% additional coverage.
Correct.
And I understand the constraints, just the way that the road undulates in front of this building, it's probably a nightmare to design with that. But that said, if you could go further back towards the wetlands on that, I guess that's the western end of the building. If you got another 2% or 3% of coverage and got relief from the planning board, could you get more cars off the road?
We would have to replace some of the wetlands to do that because right now, we're right up against a 50-foot buffer. We had the wetlands redelineated, and there was actually one unexpected finding, and that was there was a 1,500-square-foot finger of wetlands that was not previously delineated that was found this time. So in order to maintain that 50-foot buffer, we're looking at actually replacing 3,000 square feet because you do a two-for-one replacement.
Yeah, I understand.
So in that case, you know, if you're having to replace it on site, I think we'd actually run out of space. I don't know if we'd be able to really accommodate much more parking.
Because of the two-to-one replication?
Correct.
You'd gain 1,000, but you have to make 2,000 square feet. Sort of, I'm just hypothetically.
Right. And the grade does drop off to behind the building where we have the fire lane. So there's a change in the grade of, I think it's five to six feet, something like that. So there's that issue to contend with.
And as it drops off, it becomes into a floodplain area, so then they...
Correct.
To fill, they're not supposed to be displacing additional water within floodplain areas. So it runs into multiple layers of, you know, they're using almost the entirety of the upland area that's above the bank. So, yeah, they're kind of limited. I mean, it was built as a cold storage site and it's being reused for manufacturing slash warehousing type site, you know?
Right. So that's the real challenge is, you know, there was very little parking because cold storage doesn't require it. And now this particular use does.
No parking garage? Can't build a parking garage?
No parking garage? Can't build a parking garage?
I'm not sure the landlord would be willing to invest in that, but yeah, you could, obviously, but that's very expensive parking.
Yeah. So do any other planning board members have any comments or questions?
That's my main concern. It says 150 for Juicy and 150 for Northeast Alternatives, so that's a total of 300 slots you would need to see and we're just not seeing them. And they do continue to park across on town property. I know Kong Kong, you know, had some comments about that as well, being right on the wetlands and it's unfortunate. It just seems as though it's, they've outgrown the space. And I know there are, even if you look on Indeed, they're still hiring as well, so compounding the parking issue.
Well, I think what you have to look at is that something needs to be done immediately because there are a lot of cars that park on Kenneth Walsh Drive. Not approving the parking means there's just no parking. So we have to do something to address the issue. Right now, with the budget that we have and the available space that we have, this is the best that we can do.
I agree with that as far as the plan you proposed and utilization of as much space as you have. I guess I feel like we need some sort of a reassure, you know, reassuring, something from them, just to make sure that the, across the street, on town property parking won't continue. You know, if we approve a site plan and the zoning board of appeals approves the 3% additional lot coverage beyond the 70% coverage that's allowed, we need some sort of a guarantee that we're still not going to see 25 cars across the street. The grass is, you know, it's not dead. It's no longer existing. And there's a wetland within 50 feet of that. So eventually, what's going to happen is all that, when it rains heavy, all that silt on the top is just going to run into the wetlands and becomes a whole other issue.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I went by the facility several times in the last couple of weeks and I understand we have a capacity issue, but there's also an issue that the company itself can address because I sat there during three shift changes with empty spots in the parking lot and people automatically went to parking on Kenneth Walsh. So I think there's not only a capacity issue, but I think there's a training of employee issues of where they are supposed to park when there's spots available.
It's a very good point because I noticed the same thing today as well.
And it's not just one shift. I went through two shift changes.
So if nobody else from the planning board has anything, I'd like to give the zoning board of appeals an opportunity.
I'll just comment. I mean, it sounds like we're trying to, you know, fit a size 10-foot in a size nine shoe. An analogy here. And to Mark's point, I mean, I, you know, we're, it's before us because you guys need some relief on the coverage. You need 3%. But if we were to go ahead and issue the variance for the 3%, it doesn't sound like that's necessarily going to, it'll shrink the problem, but it's not going to get rid of the problem. So to Mark's point, what assurances or what can the building owner, the tenants, put in place to guarantee that that's not going to happen? And I'm not asking you to answer that right now, but someone needs to come back, I think, to us, or to the planning board and reassure them. So then if we were so inclined, we could potentially move this forward to grant that variance. But I'm not, I'm not quite sure that's going to happen. Yeah, maybe we'll have less cars that don't have spots to park, but it sounds like we're still going to have cars that don't have spots to park, so.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the building owner and we'll see if we can come up with some alternative ideas such as shuttle buses from other parking lots. That certainly happens in a lot of places, airports, there's a lot of
Again, in my opinion, it's not really our place to come up with a solution.
No, no, I understand that, but that's a good point is what assurances do you have that will retrain the employees to understand that if there's an empty spot in the parking lot, they have to go there first rather than parking on the street. And street parking is really completely undesirable by the city.
Thank you for elevating us to a city, but we're just a little down. I don't know if anyone else on the zoning board has questions or comments?
That was easy. All right, will you be taking any action tonight, John? I think we're going to continue based on some of the information that we still need to receive.
Unless anyone on my board or our board has any inclination to make a motion to take action?
No.
Then maybe someone would like to continue.
I make a motion to continue the hearing.
Till August?
August.
Okay.
You have a second?
I'm second.
August, continue till August the 18th was the motion that was made by Mr. Youngquist and Jerry seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I assume at that point, we won't need to have a joint meeting. We're kind of in the room now having this discussion and you guys will be able to have your meeting and we'll have our regulated scheduled meeting to conclude what we need to do.
I think unless anything comes up out of the, out of left field, I think we're good. I mean, you guys need to resolve, hopefully get this resolved on your end first. I mean, we need yours to be resolved, I think, in order for us to be able to decide whether we want to grant that additional 3% because to grant it and still have a problem doesn't really make any sense in my opinion, so.
You have anything else, Mark, or?
No, I think that's fine. I think the second meeting in August.
The planning board's second meeting?
Well, yeah, that's something, I guess, to discuss, but we
Well, let me, Mark, if you don't mind, when would you expect to have some of these answers? Because from a timing standpoint, if you're going to have answers at the second meeting of the planning board, then there's no reason for you to come to see us on the 18th.
So we meet on August 11th or the 25th? All right.
Question is, is August 11th enough time for you?
Well, in addition
I don't know about Environmental Partners.
Actually, I didn't bring it up, but I think because of the construction of the westernmost parking area, that will also require a filing with Conservation. Has that been scheduled?
That is in the process. I just got word from our scientific engineer who's working on that right now. He'll take care of the Conservation Commission, the filings and everything that needs to be done on that end. So he's just beginning that process now.
Okay. So would you? And you can always call the office and ask for us to continue. Would you like us to put you on the next meeting, which is August 11th?
No, I honestly, I can't get this resolved by August 11th.
So August 25?
August 25th looks like a more doable date from my end.
Okay.
Because we will need to rethink this. And if it does require more significant site coverage, that would be something that the board would consider? Say 80% or something stronger if we can get it to work?
I would say do the math on what you can achieve.
Okay.
And, you know, see what works. We'd love to see the problem resolved. And I think if you're here in front of zoning board asking for the relief, I don't think you should be coming back two and three times for 2% and 3% of the time.
Okay.
I think we should do this once and get it right.
All right.
And that said, I appreciate, you know, you talking to us tonight. Young lady is here with you as a landscape architect. I think we should actually, while she's here, talk about the plan in which she's designed, if you don't mind.
No, I think that's great. I think she's done a good job and, you know, we're making a lot of effort with the current building owner to make this just a nicer place in the town.
Mark, I'm going to, if you don't mind, where, you're not going to be ready to, well, we're going to do that in a second, but if you're not going to be ready till the 25th, we will probably push you out with our committee till September only because to come to see us the week before you're going to present to them, doesn't make any sense, right? So can I ask for a re-
Recind?
A rescind of the motion and the, rescind of the vote. I don't know if this is correct, but everyone gets the spirit of this.
Right.
Could we continue it till September, our September meeting, which is what?
15th.
September 15th as opposed to the August meeting?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have that second?
Second.
Okay, so we have Jeff making the motion, Jerry seconding it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we'll see you in September.
Okay.
That's a song, isn't it?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 7:28.
And just for the record, that's the zoning board of appeals adjourning, not the planning board.
Right.
Correct. Thanks for meeting with us tonight.
Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Good evening. My name's Natalie Brown. I'm with Browns for Dina. When jumping on this project, we came down to Lakeville to review the site, walked through it with a survey and analyzed the existing conditions that were on the site. We also were able to meet with Mark Wesen afterward before we got into designing to talk through the needs that the town was actually looking for with the additional trees, more beautifying the streetscapes and then trying to get a feel of what the town actually wanted. With the, with our client and with Mark, we were asked to look at both the two parking lots, but also the site. When walking through the site, we identified certain trees and certain shelves that are asked to be removed. The trees that were asked to be removed are either in very poor condition or are invasive species. We identified some burning bush up against the building, which is a decent move of wood and moss species as well. Looking at this plan right now, the dark trees identified here are all the trees that we are intending to save. The lighter trees throughout are all the species that we're actually going to be planting. We're including six different species of deciduous trees. There's a new species of evergreen, which is going to be around the utility areas for screening. We are also putting in some shrub areas and perennial plant beds. And that's going to be a mix between evergreen shrubs, perennial flowering plants and also some grasses. The evergreen is going to give some more life in the winter and then the perennials to give a little bit of color throughout the different seasons. We are providing street trees coming along the drive, breaking it with the shrub areas here. We're going for an in-formal planting within this front area. Right now, the trees aren't toward the site in place of where they will be planted. The site does have a lot of utility lines, so the way that we have this written is it's going to be placed based off of where those lines are shooting out, but the same number of trees are what we intend to have placed. And then as we go into the parking area, it is very tight, but we are intending to plant at least four more new trees here and then we're keeping these existing and then having some more perennial shrubs and evergreen shrubs.
Looks great. We're glad to see the landscaping. My only concern on the new parking area that's proposed, not built yet, at, again, at the western end of the building. You have the one tree in the island and then south of that, along the side of the building, the first tree there, that tree there and the one on the island. No?
This is a perennial around the side.
So that said, that and the other tree there. I just would have a little concern about the line of sight for cars entering and exiting the parking lot for the height for people to see clearly. So just make sure that whatever plantings are on the sign and/or the height of that tree allow for a clear line of sight for safe exit and entrance into the parking lot. There was an accident, I think, about a year ago at the other entrance. And it can get a little bit busy there, I think, around shift change for all, around 3:30 in the afternoon when all the businesses start to let out a lot of employees. That's my only concern that I see with it and I love that you put a lot of trees and stuff on that side of the building to really dress it up. Anybody else from the planning board have any comments about the landscape plan?
I think it's good.
Is this going to be like irrigated, the wand?
It is not intended to be.
No, no?
So the, I can actually have plant books for you as well to review the different kinds of things that we have throughout. Are either native or native cultivars within the woods. So the ones that we have chosen would not require irrigation.
Oh, is that the wand in general?
No, that is not.
No, okay.
It's irrigated as well.
So is everybody pretty good, I think?
Yes.
A little more specific.
Thank you for your presentation. Like I say, my only comments would be just a concern about line of sight. Thank you again.
You're welcome. I actually do have one request for the board. You allowed us to put in a temporary lot back in March.
Yep.
And I believe its expiration date is sometime in mid-August. Is it a possibility to get that extended?
Yeah, I think it totally makes sense to extend that. If anybody else?
Clearly an issue and having the existence of that helps to mitigate, so.
Terrific. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So I make a motion to continue this hearing until, I believe it was August 25th at 7:00 PM and as well to continue the use of the temporary parking as needed until this matter is resolved.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and we'll see you in August.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the site plan review of 156 Rhode Island Road. At the applicant's request, they would like to continue. Do we have a date specific on that, Mark? I had the email, but September 8th?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so I make a motion to continue the site plan review for 156 Rhode Island Road until September 8th at 7:00 PM. Second. Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. That will be continued. Next on the agenda is 124, 126, 128 Crooked Lane. Review of the product, project status. Anybody here on behalf of that project would like to come up to the mic and just talk about? So I believe you guys got a letter from the planning department regarding the, basically the lowman seed finished construction of the drainage basin that's between two of the lots out there?
Right.
So can you give us an update on where you'll be at?
I'm the owner of 126 Crooked Lane there and
Could you state your name just for us?
Good evening. My name's Carl Stenstrom, 126 Crooked Lane.
Thank you.
This is my neighbor, Matt.
I'm Matt Staran, 128 Crooked Lane, which is lot 3.
Thank you.
So I'm lot 2. The drainage basin is going to go between our property. At this point in time, my house just finished framing. I just put some windows in, so I'm kind of, in that letter, it said you guys were expecting my house to be built or completed by September.
Probably January.
Yeah, realistically, like, you know, late fall, early winter there. But I think the occupancy permit is contingent on that drainage basin being completed, so
That's correct.
Just wanted to fill you in on the update there. It's just a little off from the timeline on that letter there.
So is there a chance that you guys could lowman seed the drainage basin?
Instead, yeah.
Well, we put up a bond for
Can you state your name for the record?
Jared Crosley, lot 1.
Thank you.
We put up a bond that kind of cancels that out. If we didn't have the basin by a certain time,
Yep.
the bond covers that, so that's kind of where we're at.
So the letter went out based on kind of where you were at a few weeks ago and that if you were moving at a relatively quick pace, it could be done around the end of September or whatever. September, whatever.
Yeah.
And so, the, but that is about the best time in the fall to plant, right? So, I was just trying, because I thought, what's his first name? Your father?
Craig.
Craig, yeah, was, was going to be responsible for the construction, so I thought it would be good if he coordinated that with your grading.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do, lot two and three.
So, I wasn't sure, because he received the approval, but you guys purchased and are building on the lot, so it's a little different than it was envisioned, or how it works under, let's say, a subdivision, right? So.
Yeah, because we're all single owners, but.
Right, so, so we're just trying to make sure it occurs in a timely manner.
We're going to live on that street, so we want it to look good.
Yes.
But that's why the bond has been put up. You guys have that.
Will you guys anticipate lowman seed that next spring?
I mean, of course, houses, you know, is the priority. We agree, I mean, fall would be the best time, but I mean, we're still, again, I mean, just finished framing, I'm still in rough electrical, so I think that's a push right now. But I mean, concurrently, yeah, we would try to lowman seed at the same time, as stated in that letter. I think that'd be ideal to do at the same time.
Yep.
But again, I think the house is just the priority at the moment, you know?
Okay. That's fine. I mean, you know, it is.
Yeah, we're on track. We're going to do it.
Yeah, I don't doubt that you're going to do it.
Yeah.
I appreciate you guys coming in tonight. Maybe if you don't mind, give an update come November. Obviously, we can go by and take a look, but.
Yeah.
Be just nice to know, hey, we're getting really close. We hit it this winter. I know.
Yeah, we have like the rough grade, pretty much, besides his house, so, I mean, hopefully it goes quick afterwards, but.
Right, and I know that there's economies, but if you've got a guy to come in, lowman power, write that whole thing all at once, it's way better than having them come three times.
Yeah.
The basin will have to be reshaped from kind of what's there, because it's just a little depression.
It's just a little spot right now, yeah.
Yeah, we've got some.
Right, okay. Okay.
Yeah, we could, that's fair. Yeah.
All right, I appreciate you guys coming in. We really have no action to take tonight, and thanks for the update.
Do you do have any questions, or you decide that you're going to go out, have a contractor who's free and want him to get out there and do the work? Just let me know at Town Hall, and I'll come by and take a look.
Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in, guys.
I have a question for Mark, real quick. I gave you that lowman seed deposit in March, I believe, March twenty-fourth, and then I was in the process of building my house and everything. I think right at the end of June, I made a substantial purchase in lumber. I was, check money was flying around, and somebody in that office deposited that check like late June.
Yeah.
It bounced. I never bounced a check before in my life, but it's in there. You know, if you guys, I just don't want to wait like another three months before I see you guys deposit that thing again.
I would say, come by Town Hall with a fresh check.
Fresh check, you got it.
And see Erica in the treasures office.
All right. What's this, what's like the standard protocol for like depositing the checks once they're written? Because I've never seen something like that before in my life.
So, she was, so the way this was done was a little different than if it was a subdivision and a builder comes in with a check. So, she was a little unsure of where to deposit the funds, and there was a, like, a miscommunication, so eventually she realized we determined that it needs to be deposited in a certain account, and then she went and did it. So, that's why it was, there was this delay.
I'll write, I'll stop by tomorrow, write you a new check and everything, but it'll get deposited like in a reasonable time, once I hand it over.
Now that she knows where it's supposed to go.
No, that's beautiful. It bounced twice, but that's all right. All right, thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
You as well. Thank you. Are we on time?
Do you want to skip ahead or something?
Yeah, so, next item on the agenda, skipping ahead, because we have a public hearing that will start at eight PM, and we have about fifteen or twenty minutes before that, so, Mark, item five is discussion regarding the housing production plan.
Right. So, I think last meeting I passed out a copy of the survey from Town of Mansfield, that they would like to use something similar, so I can pass this out, we can maybe go through it, and see if there's questions you would like removed, if there are other questions you'd like added. And because what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have our survey, they kept, and when they did recently Mansfield, actually, they're in the process of doing it, because this survey is open during the month of July, so we keep it open for one month. So, I'd like to have our survey be open for the month of September. And that way, when they come to the board in October to give a presentation, they'll have the results of the survey, so they can explain what they found out, where they are with producing the plan, and anything else they'd like to discuss with you. So, if you want, I can.
Yeah, why don't you pass them out?
Pass them out. It's not, it's not a particularly complicated survey.
If you wouldn't mind, would you mind if we actually held that till later in the meeting? I think that's kind of a good something for just a planning board to do. I'm going to work through a couple of these other items.
Sure.
And then we'll come back to that. So, jumping down to number six, we have a general bylaw change for adding an alternate member, or an associate member to the planning board. The planning board shall have an associate member designated by the chairman to sit on the board for the purpose of acting on any application in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any regular member of the board. Or in the event of a vacancy on the board, this appointment shall be made by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, and reappointment shall be considered on a yearly basis thereafter. So, we looked at this at our last meeting. Does anybody else have any comments on this? Peter?
So, I, I was thinking that maybe we could limit it to two, one year, so maximum of two years. And my thought is, at the two years, if somebody did it for one year, and then said, okay, I'll do it again, two years, well, then just sign up and put your name on the ballot then.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean?
Term limit.
Exactly. Just two, one-year consecutives and be done with it. And then, somebody else may want to do it. This is just a thought.
I guess I'm looking to Mark just to see, is that something?
Well, that, then if all five regular members of the board choose to stay on the board, then you have your alternate trying to run against who's been working with you for the last two years, trying to bump one of you off the board. I mean, it's not like, you know, something, so I don't know whether that sets up.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Unnecessary conflict. I think the idea of the alternate is to have somebody else, so if someone has to step down, someone misses more than one meeting, because we have a long project, that's going to, such as this, that's going to go multiple meetings, you need the alternate to move in, and we talked about, you know, as the alternate sits on the board, he gains experience and can, can kind of fill in when necessary and participate in all the discussions. So, I don't know about setting them up. Plus, remember, it's a yearly reappointment, so if the board and the select board feel that that person isn't attending enough meetings, isn't, you know, they don't have to reappoint that person as well, so.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'm agreeing in this case, because I have to tell you, the first year, for me, on this board is quite a learning curve. And if a person after the first year feels that their legs have gotten wet now, want to serve a second year, I'm, I would all be for that. But I think we need to limit it at two years, and if that person chooses to run, it's up to the town to either vote them in or not vote them in. So, I'm, I'm in agreement.
You're in agreement with Peter over term?
With Peter, yeah, on the term limit. That they'd be limited to two one-year consecutive appointments, right? Consecutive or total two years?
Two years consecutive, and, I mean, but I wouldn't want to see the position go unfilled because of that.
Right.
You know what I mean? I'd hate to think that, like, that discouraged somebody from doing it, but I just thought that, like, at that point, you should say, or in lieu of a third year run, you know?
Michelle, do you have any?
I do. I, this concerns me because planning board is an elected board, and this would be an appointed position. So, you know, even town government, we have to have checks and balances. I think there could be an appearance of some sort of favoritism if it were to go to somebody who's, you know, maybe friends with certain members of the select board or the planning board. I'm hesitant to get on board with this. I do agree that there's a lot to learn with planning board, but with five elected members, I think, you know, it's doable, you know, to.
It's doable, but if there's a conflict with one-on-one members, let's say, we don't, we don't have a fallback. Now, on zoning board, they have, what, one, two, or maybe three associates that are appointed by recommendation of that chairman and the select board. I understand about the favoritism, but this board's going to have input, Mark, of who we're comfortable with, and then Mark makes the recommendation to the select board. I just think it's, it's a good place for somebody to get their feet a little bit wet, find out if they're interested in even being on any other board within the town and serving the town, because I have to tell you, in just my short time here, this is probably the hardest working board of all the other boards that I have seen.
Yeah. But so then, also, just looking at the last two elections, there was no one who ran for planning board, you were right in. And Jack, he ran unopposed, and he was appointed. So, I think if, if we had a lot of interest, that'd be one thing, but as it is, it seems to be hard to fill that fifth seat with an elected person, so.
We might not get anyone interested, doesn't say that we.
And that's why, that's why it concerns me, that rather than running and going through the process, to just show up and say, oh, you know, I want to be this alternate, and, oh, you know, it, I find it concerning personally. I think we should have maybe a process for onboarding members. I think that, you know, I got a great big packet of information from Nate when I joined, and a lot of stuff to read. I think that was helpful.
I didn't. Oh, I got nothing.
Oh, but I think, I mean.
So, I mean, ultimately, we're looking at this to possibly put on upcoming town meeting for a zoning change. The.
Why do you have general bylaw change?
The planning board doesn't require a supermajority unless it's a special permit, only a simple majority on most votes, on all votes other than a special permit.
Item, the Mullen Rule, I think is, we discussed this at the last meeting, Mark, you brought it up, that this is what we would do. Addressing that.
Addresses if somebody missed a meeting.
For a special permit process.
But it doesn't address if there's a conflict.
Or if someone misses more than one meeting.
What's that?
Or if someone misses more than one.
Right.
Because under the Mullen's rule, you can only miss one, so.
You're missing it, but you're also, then you're reviewing that, like, you missed it, but you, you're reviewing it at home, or you're still taking credit that you, that you followed along, correct?
But you can, you can no longer vote.
As it is?
If you miss more than one meeting, even if you can no longer vote.
Right.
Under the Mullen's rule, so. So, if you have large projects that go for months, it's quite possible people will miss more than one meeting, so. So, having an alternate is an important, you know, thing. So, I really don't see, I mean, the, whether it's, I've never seen it be an issue when they're appointed, particularly if they're appointed jointly between the two boards. I mean, they, when there's open positions, such as at the last Parks Commission, the select board and the Parks Commission jointly, or the select board appointed with a recommendation from the Parks Commission, because no one ran for two seats on the Parks Commission. So, appointments happen all the time on boards and commissions, so I, you know, I don't really see it as being an issue, and if that person wants to continue on, not all alternates want to continue on after a year and run for an open seat, but sometimes they do.
So, I, I think that we, it would not harm the board to have an alternate member. I think, you know, I understand Michelle's concerns, but I, I don't think that she should be that concerned. I think, you know, Peter brought up a good point about the length of term, but I do think, you know, the ability to not reappoint is there anyway.
Yeah, not necessary, maybe.
Yeah.
I just thought of it over the past two weeks. If it, if it's deemed like not necessary, then, you know, don't worry about that portion of it.
Yeah, and I think that not reappointing would be the absences. I think an absence, frequent absences, maybe not taking the position seriously would, you know, that would be why I would consider not a reappointment, if somebody wasn't really taking it seriously. And I think if you had somebody like that, they probably would run if they knew of a vacancy, and if it was three years out, I guess we'd want the ability to keep them on the board as an alternate until they knew a seat was going to open.
Right.
The other, other things is, I've seen, you know, different, not just on planning boards, but people, life happens, and people have to step down from a regular position on the planning, you know, on a board, so having an alternate isn't quite useful.
Yeah. What do we have to do with this?
Do you want to vote on this tonight?
So, what I'd like to do is have you vote on it, so I can send it to town council. I would like to send articles to town council well ahead of their submission to the select board, so that we can get, I know this is a rather simple article, but as we kind of work through them, I'd like you to vote to send it to council, I'll get the feedback. If there's some language change, I'd like to get it done prior to our voting to send it, to be placed on the warrant.
So, our vote tonight would just be to send it to town council for review?
For review, and then in September, when the warrant opens for the fall town meeting, we would vote, or when this comes back, it'll be in August.
They'll have a public hearing.
Vote to send it to the fall town meeting. Once we have a whole bunch of our articles compiled, we'll then oppose the public hearing.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
You all motion to approve sending to town council a plan for adding an associate member to the planning board?
As drafted.
As drafted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.
And this is for one seat, one seat?
Yeah.
Yes. So we have like two minutes left to open a public hearing. Do you think that we could do the same type of thing for the Mullen Rule? Which Mullenizes somebody that misses one meeting, as long as they review that?
So the Mullen's rule is, is a little different. Typically, towns adopt the provisions of Chapter 39, Section 23D, which is stated here. So as opposed to writing a bylaw. So they, you adopt the provisions of this statute. So that's also many times in, at town meeting, there are other articles where we adopt the provisions of certain law, laws and statutes that allow the town to then do certain things, perhaps create certain funds or, or so on and so forth. So we would do this. Now, what I'd like to do is to send a memo to some of the other boards and commissions. So a lot of times the article gets submitted to create a Mullen's Rule for the following boards. And so they'll say Planning Board, Zoning Board.
So tonight we'd be just looking to circulate this for informational purposes?
That's correct.
Because this is basically.
To see what other boards may be interested, so that then we can draft the article, include the other boards. So probably by the next meeting, we'll have that information back. And I'll have drafted an article to adopt the Mullen's Rule for the following boards.
So you're going to circulate that, no actions required tonight from the board on this. It was just discussion and if we agree to.
Yep.
Move forward. And does everybody agree with the Mullen Rule being a good thing?
Yes. I'd like to move forward with that.
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to keep moving forward with that one.
Okay.
And so at this time, it is eight o'clock. And we have a, I have a notice for a public hearing. So I'm going to read the public hearing. The Lakeville Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass. Act of Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, on Thursday, July 28, 2022, at 8:00 PM at the Lakeville Public Library Meeting Room. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on a proposed amendment to the Lakeville zoning bylaw as follows. 8:00 PM public hearing, this article would remove in its entirety Section 7.9 Development Opportunities District from the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw or take any other action relative thereto. The appro, the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw may be viewed at the Lakeville Town Clerk's Office in Town Hall at 346 Bedford Street, Lakeville, Mass. 02347. By appointment only, amendments are also available to be reviewed, reviewed on the Planning Board Department page of the town website. So actually, do I require a motion to open the public hearing? At this time, I, I move to open the public hearing for this matter.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do I have any discussion on this matter from Planning Board members?
I'm good.
No, I think we're ready.
Yeah.
So that said, it sounds like Planning Board's ready to remove that from the zoning bylaw. I think we have a bunch of folks in the audience tonight that didn't come just to get out of the house. Would anybody like to come up and say anything?
I'm very, I'm very happy, my name is Dick Scott, Rush Pond Road. I'm very happy to see the board taking this action. The only question I have is if this were to go to town meeting, would it be able to be amended at town meeting to allow the intent of this not to take place? I.e., could be amended it or could it be tabled? In other words, how could this be sabotaged from actually happening?
Do you have any?
Well, town meeting can take really any action relative to the article as long as it relates to the actual article that was submitted, so.
Without, without any significant change on town meeting?
Right, so without, without changing the intent of the article. So they could, they could table it, they could vote the article down and keep the DOD exactly as it is. Because we're not modifying the article, I, and we're just proposing to remove the, in, in its entirety, I don't believe, and then this would be more of a detailed question for council would be, I don't believe that someone could make a motion to keep the DOD article, but modify it in such a certain way, because that's not the intent of the article. But clearly, town meeting could not approve it, table it, you know, so.
Hi, my name is Noel Rillo. I live on Reservoir Ave. And I, I truly hope that it doesn't get contentious again, because people spoke out very strongly on this. We want it gone. And actually, Jim Mara made a very good point some time back. He said if there's any overlay being put on, on Lakeville properties, they should be, it should be the Mass. Water Resources Protection Act. I think that needs to be really heard and considered, because water is, water's an issue. It's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we take action on this, I'd just like to state for the record a clarification, because at one of the Board of Select meetings, some misinformation was stated about the Planning Board's action on this. It was said that the Planning Board took no action for years about this. And to be clear, some folks, actually, one of them's here tonight, did a citizen's petition to have this removed during the hospital project hearings. And when that was put in at the Town Clerk's Office, there were two plans filed to freeze the zoning. One was for 43 Main Street, the hospital property. And, sorry, Sue, do you remember the date that you did that citizen's petition? Roughly a month? Is that was for the fall?
I want to say March.
Okay, so it was the spring town meeting of '21?
Right.
Yes.
And that public hearing that was held with the Planning Board was within 21 days of town meeting?
I think it was less.
Less than, within 21. It was 21 or less to town meeting. And we had received both plans to freeze zoning at that time. So we knew with council's advice that if we didn't act, it would nullify the proposal of removal of Development Opportunities District in which both applicants removed their plans to not freeze the zoning. The Planning Board then, we knew at that point that they were watching the meetings and we were more worried, the second plan was for the Lakeville Country Club back then. So that plan was withdrawn. And at a, just a random meeting, Michelle had moved to remove the Development Opportunities District. And within five days, that plan was submitted again. So it's not that we didn't take action. We tried to take action coyly and to not have that zoning froze, but it didn't work. So here we are tonight, and so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to carry through with removal of the Development Opportunities District as drafted in this public hearing notice.
For a second.
You, you would be making a, a motion to make a recommendation to town meeting that this be either approved or not approved, so.
So I, so amended, my motion's so amended to that action.
To approve it or not? To approve, to recommend?
To recommend.
This article to town meeting?
To fall town meeting or the next town meeting or whatever.
Yes, that's.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Yep, step up to the mic.
Kelly Kuchmanek on Crooked Lane. When you said that you, the Planning Board submitted a proposal, I think you said, to freeze, can you just restate what you said about, you were trying to freeze the zoning for the two projects and it got turned down? Is that what you said?
There was the citizen's petition to remove the Development Opportunities District.
Right, right.
And so typically when people see zoning changes like that, they'll submit a plan in order to freeze the zoning, because if they put a plan in at the Clerk's Office for whatever development, that locks them in to the existing zoning prior to that town meeting that may or may not approve that petition. So what their intent was with those two plans that were submitted was to freeze the zoning so that they could still develop under the Development Opportunities District after town meeting if it was removed. It would still exist, because when they put that plan in, that was the zoning at the time. They froze the zoning for them. At that moment in time, if you took a snapshot of the zoning bylaws, if it existed, they were allowed to use that zoning, even though it could have been removed at the town meeting.
Okay, and, and then they, and then they, they just chose to remove the plans, is what you're saying?
There was no reason for them to leave the plan in place, because the Planning Board didn't act on the citizen's petition proposal, which nullified it at town meeting, sort of forcing them to withdraw their plans.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if this gets voted out at town meeting, is it that day it's over and done with, or do you have to wait till the AG's office approves it?
I think it would agree to town meeting and then.
Yeah, so it's, it's effective the day, at the time of the vote.
Okay.
Okay, there's this gray area between the approval by the AG. But the bylaw is effective, so it's kind of like the act at your own.
Yeah, act at your own risk.
At your own risk.
Okay, so then it's enacted upon that day?
Files.
At town meeting.
Okay, yeah.
The Planning Board still kind of has to open a hearing, but, you know, if the AG approves it, you know, it goes away.
Okay.
So there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spielner. So that concludes that. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just do the alternate number, adopt the Mullen Rule, we're good. So open space residential design. I think this is all in your court, Mark, as far as we're going to communicate with some of the boards. You have some more info and?
Yeah, so here's, so here's a little more info I did not begin as.
I saw something in my email or communication today, Mark, that the Board of Health has set up a meeting. Is that something you're aware of?
Yes, I, I had requested to be on the Board of Health's agenda for that meeting, but apparently now the Board of Health would like, has sent an email requesting that the entire Planning Board attend their meeting.
I heard Open Space as well.
What?
I heard Open Space was invited as well.
I, I don't know. I didn't.
Okay.
Look at it that carefully, so.
Yep, all right, Sue, go on.
But, but yeah, so so we can attend that meeting or if you.
Would we be holding that as a Planning Board meeting or just attending for discussion?
Well, if a majority of you show up, we have to notice it as a, as a hearing. I mean, not as a hearing, but as a meeting, as a, or a joint meeting, so. So we would have to do that.
So when is that?
So it is on August 3, I believe.
I'll be on plane to Thailand. Sorry, I won't be there. It's at 6:00 PM, August 3.
Will you be able to make it?
Yes.
Yes.
So I would say we probably want to post then.
Okay. Now, so, so what I passed out is something Michelle sent. This is another modified version of what we kind of went through briefly at the last meeting. Again, I, I didn't edit it, so it still includes stuff that we already discussed about removing or keeping in the bylaw. But there are a bunch of additional changes I wanted just to point out that I see as problematic. So first off, the pre-application meeting. A pre-application meeting was intended to be just that, a meeting to come in, have someone come in and with a general discussion with the Planning Board. Remember, this is a Planning Board bylaw for the Planning Board to review and approve, so. This, what they've added for concept plans and yield plans and production of a concept plan by a registered landscape architect and then all these other requirements under the yield plan is far and above what you would expect to do under just a, a, a general discussion with a developer who may or may not be deciding to engage his, his engineer in a very expensive process, which is to develop a full set of drawings. So this is just a, a, a very basic meeting, is all it's intended to be. And so what's, what, so.
We could get a redraft of maybe this section from you with your suggestions to simplify that pre-application meeting.
Yeah, this is, this is what would be on the next step, which is all the way on the preliminary subdivision in OSRD, concept application. That's the preliminary subdivision process, okay? So you have to file a preliminary subdivision before you can file a definitive subdivision. So that's where you would see that occurring, okay? Having a more defined plan, having comments from other boards. You know, if a yield plan is something that a developer wanted to move forward with, that is where you would see some of that information. The, the problem with the yield plan is that the way this is set up, the yield plan really isn't necessary, because we're restricting a minimum lot size of 30,000 square feet. So that's, that limits it to a three-bedroom system. Really, like a yield plan is where they calculate the septic flow that's allowed in an entire parcel. And then, let's say you wanted to build townhouse condos, then you would, would allocate as opposed to individual lots.
I know you and I talked about that yield plan thing because of the septic requirements. Did it, it creates some hoops going through, and you had suggested maybe change that to be a 55 and over component under the special permit, so that it would serve a purpose and have a reason, and the town would maybe get a benefit back out of it as well.
That's correct. So, so my thought was, is, was exactly that, that, you know, perhaps there should be a 55 and older component where you would allow townhouses, right? And so that you could do a yield plan as part of that requirement. And then that type of development, so.
And help me to understand, so that would then? possibly negate the 30,000 square foot lot size?
You could set it up that way so that they, let's say, do...
Or would it be necessary?
No, we, we can design it, you know, any way the board feels comfortable with. So you could design, still have 30,000 square foot lots and allow, you know, two, two, you know duplexes, age-restricted duplexes on each lot. It would be, have to be slightly more than 30,000 because each duplex has a, has a different flow requirements than a regular type of housing unit because age-restricted is generally has a lower flow. So you could do that. You could allow it to be all under a condominium association with no lot lines as long as the flow, they met the flow requirements for the entire parcel.
So I guess to, to your point, I think the only reason we would allow that would be only for the 55 and over component. Or at least that's, that would be the only reason I would want that in there.
Right.
And other than that, it would be a developer coming in with nothing age restricted, you know, all open to whatever, but it's minimum 30,000 or 40,000 square foot lots based on bedroom and septic flow, based on the current town bylaws. Those are the minimum requirements.
Right. So for example, if you looked at the barren estates in the front, it's age-restricted townhouses, right? So let's say that development was an OSID, there'd be another big chunk of open space and that'd be the townhouses. And then they could also do as part of that development where the single-family lots are, they could do single-family lots under this bylaw and then have some, an additional chunk of open space. So that was developed under 40B, but you could develop something, it clearly wouldn't be quite that density. You know, that dense, those lots are smaller.
Visually the layout of the properties and stuff, you would be, you could create something similar.
Create something similar. It would have a lot more open space at the end of the day than, than what that would have and be a little less dense, but yes, yes.
So just to keep this one moving along, it sounds like we would like to see a sort of a redraft from you and then we need to go to these other boards
Yep.
and talk about some of the changes. I know Michelle worked hard on this. She probably works too hard to please everybody.
Well, I did, I just wanted to mention if I could about this...
Go right ahead. Sorry, I didn't mean, I knew you had your hand up before.
Well, just the yield plan part of it, it was, I don't want to speak for the Board of Health, but when myself, Nancy, Ed and Chris got together, in order to ensure that a large piece of property that would not normally be able to be developed is going to now be developed, they had mentioned something about making sure that there was perccable land throughout and that was, you know.
Yeah, well, I don't think that the intent of the bylaws to develop stuff that can't be developed.
That's correct.
That was always a requirement was they have to be able to prove it. So I think that's probably why we need to have the board discussions with them to clarify those points because...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that's been clarified, but it's again, the people are skeptical that the board's gonna hold people to that standard, but I mean, I've seen in other communities where it's like, well, they make sure that the land that you're you're counting toward the developable land is really developable.
Right.
And so it's, it's a process.
So will you have...
Even without, even, you know, without adding this extra stuff that was added in here, there's still a significant process in the original draft
Right.
that people have to go through.
So by that August 3rd meeting, will you have time to, you now kind of redraft?
I can do that.
To get something comfortable that I think protects this board and our intent? And we can explain to these other boards so that we don't have to, as you said, succeed all of our efforts to them and if it wasn't even necessary maybe.
Okay.
So. Alright, so we'll look to that. I think we will have a forum at that meeting. And if you get that done before the meeting, I wouldn't mind if we could get a, a look at it by email first.
I will, let's see, next week.
I think it's people for everyone to get that too, all and one included, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's lots of other little things thrown in here that are... I mean, I'll have to go through all of these little things. Some are probably fine and others are just excessive as far as their, their intent is to make sure that...
Well, I, I know you said some of them unintentionally created a conflict
Yes.
within itself, so yeah, if you could go through and clean it up, even if I'm sure not everything's gonna be resolved in that August 3rd meeting, but at least it'll be a discussion with all parties and we'll all be there to defend it as well as explain it.
The problem is August 3rd is actually next Wednesday. I don't think I'm gonna... Alright, I'll get, I'll get something probably Monday.
Okay, even if you don't get it to us by then,
Yeah.
it'd be good to have something for the meeting and then we'll just be there to talk about it.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna move on from that. So the next item is retail with storage and distribution in the business zone. I just want to get the right ID. I've thought about this a bit and I'm sort of against this one. I don't like the idea of giving a a little zoning relief for a warehouse-type businesses in the business zone. As is, I think we're, we have a limited business zoning and I'd like to see retail, restaurants, brick and mortar type things instead of that component of warehouse. I don't know if anybody else has any input to that? Or, or otherwise, I mean, if you don't agree with me, but...
I, I think, I think that I was in favor of it based on the applicants that, that we dealt with and I certainly want to help them, but I don't want to craft an entire zone for a few individuals and then have it open up a lot of issues down the road with other people that are gonna look at it and go, oh, I can work with that, you know?
I don't know how you feel about sort of table on that or trying to go a different way with that?
It's, it's a little bit of a difficult situation because first off, the person who brought forth the idea of doing something like that, you know, he's, he has his own business, he'd like to, to do, to do something like this, but it's kind of tailored toward his use. It could be applied to other people, but it, I don't, can't imagine, but it could also be some other type of use that may not be as desirable. The other, the other thing is, like you say, it's still a large portion of the building that's doesn't have any activity and people coming and going and businesses often feed off each other and stuff, so if you're having a large portion of a business be just a storage space, you know, and, and with our limited, as we talked about, business zones, you know?
Yeah, and I think, I, I know we looked at this based on an app, I don't even want to call them an applicant, but interested party that came into us with a hypothetical idea. And I just always think when, when you create something like this and then this building, that guy's not gonna be there forever or that business isn't gonna be there forever. And somebody else is gonna come in and then the truck traffic increases or whatever and it's, I, I think with the business zone, we want to keep that more passenger vehicle traffic than truck traffic and I, I hate to have created something that down the road, we regretted that we did it.
But the flip side, I mean, this is where you asked me, but it's, it's really up to the board and the townspeople, but I mean, the flip side is more and more online businesses are, still have a retail storefront, but have a large inventory and sell a lot of their stuff online, so.
And so I think that makes sense to add a wholesale component to the business thing, not the warehouse thing.
Mm-hmm, right. And that, that wouldn't necessarily be a wholesale component, I mean, because they're retailing individual items. They're just storing a lot. Here it's, he cannot retail most of his products, so.
Right. It pleases the board, but I think we just kind of table that and leave it and if something else comes in the future, we maybe look at it, but I don't think we want to act on that.
Okay.
I agree.
You guys look good with that? I don't want to make this issue for you, but...
No, I, I mean, I think, I think this is definitely something that we'd need more input from residents to move forward on anything like this because like you said, you know, we don't want to be responsible for opening some sort of can of worms that, you know, distribution ends up alongside residential and the business zone.
Or then you have, then you have almost industrial use that you don't have the buffers that we normally have from industrial to residential or, you know, the setbacks and everything. Did you just give up on all that? Or, or, you know?
We may very well see these people back again if they could somehow begin a retail component, you know? And, and I mean, I don't think this...
And that's a different animal.
Yep, and I, I would hope to see them back and this hardly, probably, almost any store out there now is able to ship anything that they have, so it's, it's very common, so.
So you, you alright with letting that go, Peter?
Mm-hmm.
Alright.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda is modifying setbacks and lot coverage in the business industrial zone. So we have a couple of pages here in our packet labeled 6E. Basically, it's removing the density bonus component and giving by right the 70% because we have architectural standards. I guess my only concern is what if there is no building?
You mean lot coverage with no building? Like a parking lot?
Yeah, say a parking lot. Some sort of a business that just operates on land. And so we, it was, it never triggered architectural standards for the good-looking building or the landscape that we would have required with that stuff. So then somebody can just cover 70%?
Well, that, that would be land alteration, which would require a site plan review.
But he's saying if there is no actual building plans, like for instance, a lumberyard that is mainly operated outside on paved area without any architectural features, maybe just a small office. I can see your point, Mark.
But you would still review the site plan.
Right. For drainage and for...
Drainage and access and landscaping and...
Well, so we have existing buildings. The, the other option would be existing buildings that say were developed pre the amended bylaw that gained 50% coverage, but they didn't have a good-looking building or good-looking landscape and now they just say we're gonna cover more because by right we get 70%. So I, I guess I, I don't, I, I think we need to vet this a little bit more.
Well, if it's in the industrial areas, you're really talking about a very limited area mostly in your industrial park, so I don't, I don't think that...
But that's today, whether you change tomorrow.
That's really as much as, as a concern. I think the concern is in the business, so I reduced the business to 60%. And then I said, you know, maybe increase by special permit for all three of them upwards.
I'm not comfortable with 80 at all. That's, that just seems very far from the rural character of the town that we want to maintain.
I'm not comfortable with 70% for the industrial, industrial B. I'm okay with 60%.
And I thought we talked about industrial B going away.
Well, we discussed it going away, but when, years ago, when we approached the people who, who was inside the zone of industrial B, they weren't comfortable with it going away.
Right.
So we weren't gonna, we're not gonna...
We weren't gonna change it though, yeah, and it's...
I mean, unless they've changed their mind and they see this and they want to come forward, but you have to get rid of it. You can if they want to, but... See, my personal opinion is that the industrial park is where we want our businesses. That's where we want our warehouses. I'm okay with 70% by right. I, I think 80% is too much, but, and I, I don't think we should do anything with business. We should keep it the same.
Well, business we should keep, if you keep it at 50%, I still think you need to go...
With a density bonus?
Well, even if you said by special permit, just to increase coverage, the intent would be, you know, you're given a bonus, whether it be...
It gives you an extra layer of being able to say no if you do it by special permit. And to ask for some extra architectural things, let's say it's in a very visible location and you want to make sure that it's even beyond, I mean, you, you can, it, it gives you a little extra control. But, you know, but you do have a significant amount already under site plan.
I can agree with getting rid of some of the minutia of what you redlined out. But I do still think we should keep, keep the basis of what we had of 50% in there and just any increase would be by special permit, even if in industrial, I think to Pete's point, it would almost be a rubber stamp to get him there, but if there's some reason that we didn't like a project, at least we'd have leverage to control.
Okay.
Based on that.
And, and to, to the industrial B, Mark, have you driven by the area that's industrial B in town? If you went to 70% lot coverage, let's say those companies that are there sold them, it's still industrial B. I don't foresee them selling, they're, they're very, they've been there a long time, Bay State and Leonard Beef, but if they were to sell them, I mean, holy smokes, 70% lot coverage on those beautiful like, you know, farms, is basically what it is. Let's just happen to have a business plunked in the middle would be a...
Big, big loss.
Yeah, it'd be a big change, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So we can, we can put those back to 50%, but keep the starred, maybe increased by planning board special permit.
Yeah.
You don't need all the rest of this density bonus and design standards.
But I don't want to see 80% of special permit.
Right, that's coming out. That's coming out.
So up to 70 or what, is that what it's gone back to?
Yeah, so I, I think we just got, log your case, go on, but yeah, if you went back to the bases and give the additional 20% by special permit.
Right.
I, I think that
Okay.
you know, it's not a major change, but it changes the way we do it, but we still have protection, I think, for a project that may be displeasing.
Okay.
Yep. You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yes. Very.
Yep.
Come right up, please, Dick.
Harkening to what Pete, Dick Scott, Reston Road. Harkening back what Peter said, industrial and industrial park. I recall one meeting, and I don't remember which one that the planning board had, where you mentioned that the buffer zone between industrial and residential may not be enough and that's a, a, a long journey because 25 years ago, people thought 100 feet was too much, okay? So I guess what I'm leading up to as you're reviewing it, having gone through the warehouse... the warehouse in my backyard and discussion of a warehouse at the country club, and having gone through, um, the noise analysis, et cetera, it's pretty clear that 100 foot's not enough to provide noise mitigation, particularly, um, when houses are abutting that property. I've done a lot of research on it and I just think that that's one area that you might want to, as you're going through these discussions. The one good thing that was in the DOD was by special permit for uses, particularly industrial uses, because it gave the board more authority and more power to control it. But having gone through the warehouse discussions and having done research where warehouses have been built, for example, by Amazon, uh, over 80% of Amazon warehouses are more than 300 foot away from the nearest residence. So I'm just throwing that out, that those are the kinds of things, as you are talking about, quote unquote, the master plan designating where industrial is or is not going to go, that might be something.
Yeah, I know, it, to, to what you were saying.
Yeah.
Uh, and it might have been the meeting you heard it at, we actually voted and increased the setbacks on the development opportunities district, uh, to 300 feet.
Correct.
Because that was one of our concerns, even though we voted to move towards eliminating that.
Right.
Obviously, we still will have some zoning throws and that was our intent. And correct me if I'm wrong, most of the industrial land that we have zoned industrial has been developed.
Yes.
So, I mean, not diminishing what you said, you do bring up a good point, because if we, we actually talked about zoning another parcel, uh, industrial that's sort of adjacent to the industrial park, and certainly those buffers, that's something to consider if it's against residential area.
And, and, and a good, another good point would be Talbot's is going to be reused for something.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's some very nice neighborhoods on the back of Talbot's that pre-existing use, but the activity at that warehouse has been very slow and non-intrusive on the neighborhood. So I guess what I was leading up to is, you're, you're limiting what you can do with what exists. And the industrial park, we only have two, okay? As we're looking forward, whatever our, our bylaws and zoning would be for that industrial areas that are on our map, it would be nice to have that kind of authority, uh, within, with the board. Because I, I look at the zoning saying where it's going to go and I look at the bylaws saying how you guys are going to regulate it. And I think that, that DOD power of having special permit for you guys, I think, is essential.
It's a big help.
Yeah.
For sure. Thank you.
So we have to vote on this on anything tonight?
No, no, Mark's gonna come back with those little changes that we talked about. Does, does everybody agree that we could remove the minutia of density bonus that he's redlined out? And it's just the concerns about the lot coverage?
Yep.
Yes.
Because our new bylaw has the architectural standards.
Yes.
So it'd be just removing the language that gives you the density bonus and the big block scale stuff that, I, I don't think that, uh, you know, that's for a Home Depot type of development. And I don't think we have anything zoned that would even allow one of them in, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong on that one, Mark.
Well, it could. It's a retail use, but you'd have to find a pretty big parcel.
Right.
But it would still have to go through site plan review, which now includes that.
Yeah.
Architectural feature.
Yep. So, Mark, you put on the agenda here, or you have there, the development opportunities district revisions.
Well, that, I just kind of left that in the industrial district done because at the last meeting, we talked about, um, a couple of different areas of town, because we wanted to, we had always talked about, um, also having an article to try and either, uh, to modify the DOD or to expand an industrial, um, area, uh, because we are removing the possibility of, of having a lot more commercial, uh, by removing the DOD. So, uh, the planning board at one time had created those maps with the circles around the highway exits and that I had looked at those areas, um, I think I passed those out at the last meeting, and really came up with only two areas, unless anybody has any other suggestions, that really kind of meet what we had talked about, which was a large undeveloped parcel near the, or which is what you were looking at, is, is large undeveloped parcels near a highway exit, um, that could be reused or rezoned or developed into an industrial or commercial property. So we had, last meeting, talked about two of them, one being, uh.
Yeah, there was the Frank Will property off Route 140. It's about 300 acres. And then there was the parcel north of here that I mentioned in my conversation with Mr. Scott, uh, that's just on the other side of the railroad tracks from the industrial park.
Right. So we had, we had talked perhaps about.
I, I feel like maybe the thing to do would be, if we wanted to rezone one of those, that maybe we, rather than modify the development opportunities district to overlay them, maybe we talk more about what would we want to see there and what we would want to nurture to, to be there if we wanted to try and change the zoning.
Yeah, I agree. So in regards to the 300 properties off that 140 in county, you know, I believe it's sold. So, you know.
It might be off the list.
Right, and, and, but it's almost like, um, if, if the future owner or the present owner were to come to us and, uh, present something, you know what I mean? That's such a big property and it, if whatever he has plans for it, it will be a, um, a big project.
You can go on, Peter, I was just gonna have her come up to the mic.
So they may have ideas about what they want to do and we could work with them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? The other property is, is, I don't believe we've ever heard from them, the one adjacent to the industrial park, right? We've never heard from them and, and they've never mentioned that they wanted to do anything.
I know about that one.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to separate up, say your name.
I'm sorry, um, Pat Wren, 7th Horton Street. The other parcel that's by the industrial park is over the railroad tracks, like you said. And when, um, Jean Bartlett.
Yeah.
Went to sell that, he tried to turn it into, he wanted the board to change it to industrial. And we had a meeting and everybody, you know, we went, all the neighbors. We, we didn't get a, a notice either about abutment, but my property abuts that.
Yeah.
So, anyway, just in a town meeting and talking to town people and planning board, they decided that, yeah, I probably shouldn't because of, you know, um, the access to it. Of course, now I think you're talking about putting something over the railroad track? Would they would go out that way?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. But because of, uh, the wet, the wetlands and 18 and neighborhoods, again, neighborhoods. But, um, so I know that, that wasn't a thing before and now, so when you do a DOD and when you're going to put your circles back, like to specific, um, areas, is that, um, that a planning board thing? You say, oh, we're just gonna designate this?
It's not, it's not that simple. So the intent of this discussion is we're eliminating.
The DOD.
The development opportunities district, which is overlaid over the whole town.
Yes.
And, uh, so again, the intent of this discussion is, do we want to leave that as is now? If it goes away, it goes away and that's it? Or do we want to create a smaller, actual overlaid zone on something? Again, to our point, near highway ramps that might be more conducive to allowing the traffic without it impacting some people in town? And still promote some commercial growth in town to help the tax base without burdening the school system.
Right, so what is the process of, to do that, though?
It would go to town meeting.
It would.
You'd have a public hearing as well.
Yep, there'd be a public hearing. We, we'd continue to discuss until we got to the point we felt like this was the right thing to do. If we did choose that path and, and then we'd hold a public hearing, vote to, like we did tonight, to recommend to the select board to put it on the warrant, and it would go to town meeting for a vote.
Okay, and thank you for trying to get rid of the DOD over the whole town.
Andrew. And I, I think that's a great question, is do our residents want to see it somewhere else? Because obviously if it goes to town meeting, they're going to have to vote yes or no. So before we put in a lot of work and try to work on where it could go, should we first find out? Does it remain?
Yeah, it, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to, to do a grassroots type of survey in area, especially if that was an area that we were thinking about.
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, if it did go to town meeting, um, could the select board overturn the town's decision like they did in the last?
No.
That's not something at all.
Not at town meeting.
Right, okay.
I, I don't, I don't think they could just.
You don't think? I just want to know for sure, because.
You might try.
Right now, we, I personally don't feel like I can trust that the select board won't make a move like that. So is, is that something legally, do we know that if the town voted specifically, if the select board can overturn that decision?
I don't think that.
No.
They could actually.
Is that a definite?
And so just to be clear, the select board did not overturn a vote of town meeting.
Or vote differently, yeah.
Yeah, right, they, uh, for the, for the Lakeville Country Club, they just chose not to exercise the option. Town meeting just voted to authorize them to borrow money. I, I, you know, appearance wise, it seems like that's what they did, but technically they didn't because they don't have the authority to just overturn what town meeting does.
They decided not to act on the election.
It was always a select board's decision.
But it's the same thing with zoning. They, they cannot just arbitrarily overturn.
So this zoning, if, if it were to be put to town meeting for a vote.
You're talking about what we're talking about.
What you're talking about right now, if you, you know, if.
That would go to town meeting, the townspeople would vote, and whatever they voted would stay.
That's up to the town people, it's not a select board decision like that other.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, and a zoning change like that would just go with the recommendation by the planning board at town meeting and maybe the finance committee would have a comment on it, but the select board wouldn't.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, can I ask one more question? All right, when you're considering, um, the, um, industrial areas? Okay, like if you take, say, an area, I don't know, two miles by two miles, is there a percentage of that, okay, five miles by five miles, is there a percentage of that land that you would think that has now oversaturated with industrial? Especially if we get a couple more warehouses over, you know what I mean? Like, like if you have a plot of land, right, five miles by five miles, and you find out that you have, you know, warehouse, industrial, you know, all this stuff, and a couple little neighborhoods scattered in between, is there any time when you say, you know, instead of taking the entire five mile by five mile and making it one big industrial park?
So, I know you're speaking hypothetically, but I think five miles by five miles is a whole town.
Is what?
The entire town.
No, it's not the, oh, right now it's the entire town.
No, no, I'm just saying that.
It's a large area.
Parameter.
Right.
That you're using as your hypothetical would be an entire town. Five miles by five miles would be like the whole town of Berkeley.
Yeah, that whole corner of the town.
No, no, five miles is not a corner. That's an entire town. It takes five miles to drive across town.
How many?
It's, it's five miles to go across some small towns. I'm saying you're, you're talking about zoning a parcel, it's an entire town.
Okay, okay, two miles.
So let's, let's say like.
One by one?
Oh, oh, yeah, maybe, uh, one square mile area. Maybe the Great Ponds Industrial Park, it's a meandering, probably a square mile or so. So, that, I'm, I'm not going to help you with this, I'm going to give you some homework, but.
Yeah.
Go on Lakeville's website.
Yeah.
And look at our zoning map.
Right.
For all the different colors and how blotchy it is, I think to your point. And then go on Berkeley's.
The what?
Go on Berkeley's.
Okay, I will do that, Berkeley's.
This is drastically different, I, I did it the other day, I had never looked at Berkeley's. And it's a shocking difference. Uh, and, you know, and I, I think I've been vilified for a lot that's going on and I, I'm really kind of dealing with the stuff that was created 30 years ago. You know, I didn't make our zoning map, I'm just the punching bag for now when stuff by right comes to us, that it's, I'm the face of it. But.
Right.
You know, compare our zoning map to Berkeley's and you'll see kind of why we have all this commercial development compared to a, a bedroom unit like that. You'll see their whole map is, oh, I think it's green, all residential, except for one little corner that touches.
They don't even want to build the high school, I get it. They're staying that way. I'm, and I'm not against progress, I just think that, again, smart planning.
Yes.
And who you vote for, honestly, it comes down to know who you're voting for, too, because.
That's not going on.
I'm just saying, because if you, I'm saying just know who you're voting for, because honestly, if it's your town government making these decisions and, and you see it happening right here, we're, we're discussing items to bring to town meetings, so I think it's important for people to be involved and pay attention, because you should have a say. And if you want your town to be a certain way, speak up, attend meetings, get out there, you know, put yourself out there.
I like that we have attendance. It's nice that we have people here. I hope if anybody feels like they want to come up and speak, I know several have, that they do. Because we value what people have to say.
Yeah, I've been to town meetings. I try to make it as often as I can in my absentee ballot when I was in Alaska. I try, so thank you.
You're welcome. So I'm, I'm gonna have us move along from the development opportunities district. Maybe you and I can have a conversation about that, Mark, and maybe we'll put it on, on agenda down the road or.
Yep.
And we'll see what the board says.
Mm-hmm.
Industrial district revisions, which is.
Well, again, I don't, that was kind of, the, the DOD and the industrial district were meant to be kind of, um, combined topic, because I didn't know which way, because we discussed both, right?
Okay, all right, so I see what, yes. So we did talk about that. I think that if we were to consider rezoning a property like the ones we discussed tonight, I think for starters, we'd want to probably talk to the owner. Uh, and it probably wouldn't be bad, just, I think, to some of these folks' points tonight, maybe reach out to some of the abutters and.
I, I've, I've talked to the owner of the former A.A. Will property. So I know that he's in favor of, um, some, something being rezoned here for industrial, commercial, DOD type use, but probably not the entire thing. But I haven't sat down with, um, you know, with the, the maps here, um, and the parcel maps and kind of see what he was thinking, you know, because, um, you know, uh, you know, maintaining a large buffer, you know, maybe the new homes become the buffer to some commercial uses so that the existing homes, uh, maybe there's, um, there's multiple ways of, of doing it, um, so that you can create a large buffer there.
Okay, so please give us feedback on that and follow up, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Okay, and I'll reach out to the current, to the owner of the, um, the other site up by, uh, 495.
Okay. Uh, so we have off-premise sign clarification. Is this a housekeeping thing that will put?
Exactly, so.
Town meeting?
Uh, the new town, uh, signed bylaw removed off-premise signs, uh, from being permitted. However, in our section under special permits, we still, uh, we didn't realize that just like. that just like with the boat thing, that there is a section here for sign slash off-premise. Um, so we would be removing this section here to, so that there's no conflict between this and the new sign bylaw.
Uh, so we're going to make a recommendation on this to the board of selectmen?
I would say let's send this to, again, to council. Not that there's really anything to comment on, but they would prefer us to do that and then at the next chance, once we compile a group of our bylaws, come back from council, we can then forward a, a batch to the selectmen all at once and then post our hearing.
Okay.
Together.
You didn't have a question on the sign thing?
I have a question about the.
All right, so let me just take action on this and I'll give you a chance. Uh, so I move that we send this proposed change to council for review and then continue with the action.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, so send that to council, Mark.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, come on up.
I'm Richard, um, Lon Surley, Lord. Um, I guess my question is, why are, why are we kind of like chasing? Or is that common to an outsider who is disheartened by what's happening on either side of my property? Why are we looking for more industrial? Like why, why are we going to speak to people?
I don't think that we're looking for, for more as much as we just removed something.
Yeah.
And we may still want to have some development in the future. I think you had just mentioned, you know, some development like that is good for the tax base. I understand i- in the wrong location, it's not.
Yeah.
Great, but we don't want to eliminate all potential for that kind of growth.
Okay. Okay.
That's all.
Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Go right ahead.
Follow up on that just a little bit. Uh, first of all, um, it's great seeing you in live persons and not on TV. Uh, I, I really feel that the Zoom.
It was horrible.
Created a lot of communication problems. Um, right now, we have the Lakeville Hospital and we have the country club and we have Talbot's and we have this place down there where the Lee, uh, off the river tracks, okay? I, I'm in possession of a legal document that you may or may not have seen and I think it gives a lot of background. It's one-sided, but it gives one perspective, uh, on the development of the DOD and I'd like to submit it to you, uh, to make it available. If you haven't already seen it, theoretically, you should have been copied through town council on it, or you should have been copied directly through our attorneys, but I want to make sure you have the information because I think it may be a basis, uh, to give you more authority with regard to the Lakeville Country Club. And in a proactive approach, I'd like to share that with the board and just use it at that.
Okay.
I'm sure we did get a copy.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Uh, so we took care of the off-site sign premise thing. Uh, so we have two sets of minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so first, chronologically, I have minutes from Thursday, June 9th, the planning board. Uh, we have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Yes, or moved.
I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
I have to abstain, I was not at that meeting.
So motion carries with a majority. And next set of minutes?
I'm going to approve the meeting, the minutes of the meeting from June 23rd.
I'll second it.
As drafted?
As directed.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, so I have review correspondence on the agenda, Mark. Do you have anything from neighboring towns?
No.
Okay. Um, our next meeting will be August 11th. Well, I should say, so we will have not our regular public meeting, but we will have a planning board meeting on August 3rd. A joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That will be posted, however, our next regularly scheduled meeting to discuss planning board items, uh, will be August 11th at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, just.
Discuss meeting dates?
I'm not available for that meeting.
Okay.
Unless you want to call in.
So if you, if Nora, if you have any questions, wait, which one, the 11th or the?
The third and the 11th.
Oh, both.
Unless you want me to zoom in on the 11th.
Yeah, well, if you have any comments on the questionnaire from middle, from whatever town that was.
Yeah, I do have some and I'll send them to you.
Yeah, send them to me so that we can kind of go through that in detail at that meeting and then, uh, we'll discuss some zoning and I don't think we have any, uh, we'll have a form A.
Yeah, I saw.
But I don't think we'll have any, uh, large applications.
Uh, so discuss August meeting dates, is that, if we have a light agenda, we considered foregoing the second meeting that month?
Um, well, again, I, I think it depends kind of where we end up with zoning discussions on the 11th.
Okay.
We already scheduled that other hearing for the.
Oh, so yeah, we already got, yeah, the 25th for, uh.
Yes, there you go.
Um, so I know it looks like we're right at the end, but do we want to actually go by through this right now?
Oh, yeah, we can.
So we have the Mansfield Housing Production Plan, uh, survey. So if you turn to the second page, I don't know if you have the first page.
They have pictures of three different houses, square footage of each, two families, single family, single family cul-de-sac. Uh, what are your thoughts on recently built homes in Mansfield? So we're going to have a question like this on our survey.
Yeah.
Is, is, and there'll be photographs like that of stuff that maybe went through MLS?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, I think they'd like to use this format.
Yeah.
In most of these questions, um, unless, you know.
Is answering these questions, is it the board or is it the residents?
Well, I'm sure we'll each do a survey, but this is going to be put out to the public?
This will be put out to the public, that's right.
In writing, electronically?
Uh, probably electronically.
You're going to use Monkey Survey?
I don't know what they use, um, as far as, um.
I think that's what, um, Open Space used as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say, because you can get daily updates to what's going on.
Okay.
At one of our meetings, you wanted just to see.
This would be put up, put out by Serpeds, so.
Uh, so do we want to go through all these questions one by one or do you want us just to scan the survey and say, this is, uh, complete and it looks like it'll give us a good.
Yeah, I mean, it.
Picture back with the survey completed.
I mean, we could, we could go through it quickly, I mean.
It's not as thick as that.
It doesn't have a ton of, um, well, it's trying to get a sense, most of the questions are trying to get a sense of, um, you know, what people feel about certain types of, without getting too detailed of, like of certain types of housing, you know, it talks about is the current housing stock meeting the community needs. Do you agree, you know, strongly agree, disagree? You know, do you feel there's enough senior housing options? Do you feel there's enough family appropriate options? Do you think there's anything missing from the housing supply? So there's a whole series of questions about housing stock and.
Mark, has Open Space seen this? Because I'm thinking there might be a couple of questions they might, might add.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, no, I mean, no, nobody else is.
Well, they don't like housing.
Now, the planning board's kind of the lead on this, I mean, I can share with whoever you would like, so.
And honestly, if, if I may, like, when we're talking about housing production plan, I think something that should be done in conjunction is also this guideline for calculating general land area minimum, which, um, is in regards to, I know it's not planning board purview, but chapter 40B housing. Um, so one figure that we really need to have a handle on is this one and a half percent of the total land area.
Is that something we could have Serpeds do or?
The one and a half percent?
This, yeah, it, so this is another way of reaching, uh, that safe harbor is the one and a half percent.
Yeah, you're not going to even come even close to one and a half.
Not at this town.
Well, because it excludes.
Wetlands and ponds.
And water and, um, I think we need to have, this is a more static figure, we know the 10% is always a constantly moving number, so I really think this should be done as well, along with this housing production plan.
It's a very hard number to prove, uh, it's.
Well, it gives a whole breakdown on, on how to do it.
I, I understand, but it's.
I think it needs to be done whether it's hard or not, unfortunately.
But I, 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 I think that the, we're well, well, well under that. I mean, you have two somewhat large, uh, projects that are, uh, developments that are under 40B. Um, but other than that, you have a few scattered smaller ones and that's it.
But I think it's important to know where we stand, because we know, you know, whether, where we are in that percentage.
You're going to be like under a half a percent.
Six point something, then we should know is, this as well, I track it, I believe. And, you know, just knowing that there's that affordable housing component of CPA, I think it is definitely important to have that figure. Because we know that we have.
As Lakeville, 36.1 square miles.
Minus water.
Minus water, is that what you're saying?
Minus water, minus wetlands, minus anything that's in a conservation restriction, which we do have a.
It's very difficult, yeah, I'm just, it's very difficult to do in towns with an acre and a half minimum lot size, correct? Because like, uh, you, towns with half lot, half, half acre lots, it's, it's more doable, but our, our lots are gigantic here, so.
But this doesn't have anything to do with lot sizes, this is the one point, one and a half percent of the total buildable land in Lakeville. How much of that buildable land has 40B developments on it already?
Right.
You, you have only two, what would be considered here sizable 40Bs, which, and then you have a couple small, a few smaller ones. If you add that total acreage up, you know, you're, you're probably not even at 150, 200 acres tops, not even that. And, and so.
I know, we can find out for free.
You, what?
Next time a 40B comes in to sell, I'm working on that for them. Let them figure it out and come back to us. They'll prove otherwise.
At least let's get it.
Yes, um, you know, so.
So are we looking to make changes to these questions or just kind of approve as drafted?
That's the thing, I mean, we can, we can go through it all, you want it, you can take it home. I have a few more I can pass out to anybody in the audience who'd like to read through them. Um, you know, they're, they're pretty straightforward questions.
And some of my questions are cut off. I think I've got the same page multiple times. Maybe that's, you got the same page multiple times, maybe your packet just wasn't picked together.
So.
Because look, this is the same question, this is the same question. I don't think we got the package.
I mean, our, our eleventh meeting for the 11th.
Same question, same.
Hey, Mark, before that, how many pages are in the actual survey? Because I seem to have multiple surveys in my packet of the same survey. Yeah, and that's the same question over and over.
Yeah.
Accountant questions.
When I stapled them together, I might have made it a six.
Yeah. So maybe an electronic version, if there's one? Yeah, I, I'd like to have an electronic version of it.
Okay. Yeah, but, you know.
I, I'm fine with it as it is, other than we have to change the word Mansfield to Lakeville.
Yeah, that would be a good thing.
Uh, but, so I would say if anybody wants to review this over the next two weeks.
I do.
And at our August 11th meeting, hopefully we can agree or ma- amend it in whatever fashion if needed to get this going so that we can get this out in the public for the survey.
Yep.
So that Serpeds can do their thing.
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, Serpeds created this one, correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, they.
And it's probably based on others that they did before.
Right.
Because they've done multiple.
And it's been working, so.
Uh, I think that concludes tonight's business.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we adjourn our meeting for tonight. Second.
I have a motion in a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.